During that period of time, you will preserve your expertise that's already on the Planning Commission?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Yuba City determining the adoption of an ordinance regarding the Planning Commission membership and organization. An ordinance regarding the Planning Commission membership and organization is not subject to the environmental review pursuant to SEQA guidelines, section 15378, and to repeal and replace sections 8-1.01 and 8-1.02 of Chapter 1 of Title 8 of the Municipal Code Regarding the Planning Commission Membership and Organization.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries, so this will come back at the next council meeting, correct, Mr. Moody?
That is the plan.
Thank you. All right, we will move right along to Agenda Item 11, which is the aquifer storage and recovery well, municipal well number 3, 2209, a work construction contract for below-ground facilities. Ben, you still have the floor.
I think I'm on the original list, but I'm going to turn it over to Kevin. So Kevin's the Deputy Public Works Director for Engineering, and he's really the expert on this. And since we're doing a little bit of swapping around, I'm going to turn it over to him.
Right. Welcome, Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. Thank you, Ben, for covering me and Diana before him many times. Thank you for giving me an easy one here tonight, hopefully relatively simple compared to the previous one. So Item 11 before you tonight is the award of a construction contract for Phase 1, which is a well drilling on our aquifer storage and recovery well project. Okay, just a quick background. Aquifer storage and recovery wells, or ASR wells as they're abbreviated, allow water to be injected into the groundwater table during times of excess flows, like today, for instance. And then the water sits in the groundwater aquifer until such time that the city would need it, say in a drought situation, and then we can pull it out of the groundwater at that time. So it's kind of a two-way well system. This type of project basically increases the city's drought resiliency, and it also expands our water resources. Back in March of 2022, California Department of Water Resources awarded the city a grant of over $6.3 million to install the ASR well system. In July of 2023, council awarded a design contract to Corolla Engineers of Sacramento to design the project for us. And similar to our recently completed Well Number 2 project, the design calls for basically a two-phased construction. Phase 1, in which we're dealing with tonight, is the actual well drilling. And Phase 2 involves equipping the well with pumps and motors that will be sized based on data that's collected during the well drilling phase. In last December, council approved the plans and specs for the Phase 1 project. Okay, so after council approval, staff advertised the project for bids. The period was from December 20th through January 23. We received three bids, and NorCal Pump and Well Drilling of Yuba City is the low responsible and responsive bidder. It's interesting to point out that the low bid is approximately $175,000 less than the engineer's estimate, which is a welcome change in this current bidding climate. So I'll give kudos to the Corolla Engineer team with Ludorf Scalmanini as the well designer, and our own project manager, William Zhao, has done a great job putting together a bid package that got us these nice bids. And it's also nice to have a local contractor, once again, submitting the low bid for us. Okay, fiscal impact. The estimated total construction cost is approximately $1.275 million. This includes a 10% contingency amount, which is a little bit lower than we typically would ask for on a construction project. The contingency would only be used if unforeseen conditions are encountered during construction. The reason we're not asking for more is that the well drilling phase is actually a pretty narrow scope of work, and we, on the Well Number 2 project, it was a sufficient amount. So I'm comfortable with the $98,000 we're asking for there. I do need to apologize in the staff report, I did not include the Corolla services during construction, and the reason I didn't is that we already included that in their previous award of the design contract. So that's already factored in. And then the staff time we've already budgeted for as well. Let's see. I do need to point out as well that the ASR account balance is $3.6 million. So we have plenty of money to do Phase 1, but the Phase 2 estimate right now at a 50% design level is roughly $7 million. We value engineered the heck out of that project, and that's as tight as we can get it. What that means, though, is that when we come forward with approval for plans and specs, and through this 2526 CIP budget process, we are going to be making the necessary budget adjustments to fund that project. A quick note on environmental. The SEQA document for this project was an initial study and mitigated negative declaration, a pretty standard document for this, a project of this complexity. We filed the document with the State Clearing House and posted for public comments on December 17th. We only received one comment, and it was from the Regional Water Quality Control Board. They basically just notified us of various regulations and permits that are required for the project. With regards to the regulations, we've incorporated those into the contract. And with regards to the permits, we will apply for those and obtain those prior to operating the project. So staff has determined that no revisions are needed to the SEQA document, and we're recommending that you adopt it tonight. All right. With that, staff recommends adopting a resolution implementing Items A and B as shown on this slide, and I'd be happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the council? All righty. Kevin, thank you for the work that you've done on this. This has been a long, long time coming, so thank you. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, I will bring it back to the council for action.
Right. Through the mayor. I move to adopt a resolution which takes the following actions. Award a construction contract to NorCal Pump and Well Drilling Incorporated of Yuba City, California, in the amount of their total bid of $983,306, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract on behalf of the city, subject to review and approval as to legal form by the city attorney, and adopt the initial study/mitigated negative declaration for the aquifer storage and recovery well project.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Let's get it built. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Agenda Item 12. This is the summary report from our special workshop that was held on January 29. Ms. Langley, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. So annually, the City Council has a goal-setting workshop. In previous years, they've identified the goals that kind of lead the decision-making process through, as you're evaluating staff reports and making decision points. The goal-setting session for this year was last week, January 29. This year was a little bit different in that we focused on the general fund budget and mobile vendors. At the workshop, Deanna Pope, our Finance Director, Finance IT Director, provided an overview of the general fund, actuals for fiscal year 2324, in which you can see that with the budget process, we had a net deficit of approximately $2.4 million. We had budget stabilization reserves available of $6.6 million. And so we used the budget stabilization reserves to make up that deficit. So we ended that fiscal year with approximately 4.2 available of the budget stabilization reserves. For the fiscal year 2425, adopted budget. As you can see, we adopted a budget that showed a net deficit of $5.46 million, in which we are utilizing the remaining budget stabilization reserves, and we show a deficit of about $1.3 million. It's important to note that this is the adopted budget numbers. Often, when we get into actuals, the, either the revenues are higher or the expenditures are lower, and traditionally, we see some net savings there. I also want to note that, you know, this is in the budget document. If you go and you look at the city manager's message, if you look at where we were, we noted that we were adopting a budget that had a deficit of approximately $5.5 million. If you look at how the city's general fund monies are distributed, you can see that a large portion goes to public safety, so police is approximately 35.15%, and fire is approximately 27.19%. This public works number of just over $7 million, while it is general fund money, there's a corresponding transfer of road funds that come into the general fund budget to offset those costs. Ms. Pope also gave you a presentation on our other reserves and discretionary funds. So we have a healthy city's reserve of about approximately $8 million, vehicle replacement fund, and this is just the general fund portion of $6.585. It also takes into account leases that have already been approved by council through the general fund. We have a pension stabilization fund of approximately $4.46 million. Those funds have to be used towards pension costs, so they could not be used for other general fund expenditures, but they could be used to pay the pension bill and then thereby freeing up some of the other general funds. We also have General Fund Capital Improvement Program, approximately $2 million. And then she shows the reduction of the $1.29 of the budget stabilization reserves from this fiscal year, leaving a total reserve and discretionary balance of just under $20 million. So based on the city's current financial situation, I asked each department director to develop 5% and 10% reduction scenarios, which they presented last week. And the reduction scenarios take into account reducing material services and supplies, freezing vacant positions, reallocating resources. And what I mean by that is, for instance, in the police department, they would reallocate a homeless liaison officer to patrol. So the primary, the priority of the police department is to provide patrol services, and so they would reallocate resources as necessary to attain those budget savings. And other opportunities that we discussed were increasing revenues. Then also, the fire chief, while his presentation focused on closure of fire station for a shorter period of time under the 5% scenario and a much longer period of time under the 10% scenario, his recommendation was to utilize the vehicle replacement fund to make up the The action items that came from the workshop were at this meeting. We were going to recommend a policy for freezing of vacant positions. So Councilmember Pasquale and Councilmember Kirchner and I met yesterday and discussed that policy, which I'll be going into in a minute. At the February 18 council meeting, I'll be coming back with a recommendation for reductions that can be implemented pretty quickly, and a corresponding resolution for council to adopt those reductions and the corresponding changes in service to the public. As part of the 2526 budget process, the department heads will recommend additional reductions for the budget ad hoc consideration, and then it'll come before the full council for consideration. And then, as a separate and side note, in the discussion related to mobile vendors and development services, we'll bring back an item to initiate an ordinance to discuss additional controls to be placed on mobile vendors, similar to what we're seeing in surrounding agencies such as Sacramento County and Woodland. So the vacant position policy recommendation, there's, there's four slides associated with this. And so, in general, freeze general fund positions that are not frontline safety. So I went through the existing list of vacant positions to just provide some examples of how this would be implemented. And so examples of this in community services, this would be freezing of vacant park maintenance worker 3, freezing of recreation coordinator. In development services, freezing plans examiner 1, 2. In fire, freezing a vacant fire inspector 1, 2. I will note that the intent would be to have the ability to fill the vacant fire marshal position and to maintain the current fire inspector. Based upon Chief Alexander's reduction scenarios, he may not be able to fill the fire marshal position, but that would be coming across through the budget process. Human resources would freeze vacant administrative analyst. And then you can see in the police department, community policing coordinator, there's three vacant community service officers, two vacant public safety dispatchers, and there's currently two, I believe, one or two vacant records clerks. The recommendation for the public safety dispatchers is to maintain a minimum of 12, and we have 14 budgeted. And then for clerks, maintain a minimum of five, and we have six budgeted. Just based upon these current vacant positions, if they were to remain frozen for approximately one year, that's about $1.2 million in savings, just based on these positions. In terms of positions that would be filled, it would be general fund positions that are frontline safety. So examples of how this would be applied is for development services, a building inspector and a code enforcement officer. On fire, a firefighter position. And then for police, police officer positions. Fill Sutter Animal Services Authority positions. So Yuba City is part of a JPA that oversees Sutter Animal Services. So even though Ann is the director over SASSA, there's a separate board for SASSA, and just based upon the needs of SASSA, the recommendation would be to fill those positions. Of the total cost, the city's portion of these positions is approximately 69%. In addition, fill non-general fund positions that have different funding sources, again, non-general funds. So examples of how the policies would be applied include water-funded positions, such as water distribution operators, water treatment plant operators. But this would also include the customer service rep at the finance counter, because the majority of those positions are funded through utilities. Waste water funded positions, again, this is wastewater treatment plant operators, and there's also a maintenance supervisor position that's vacant. Mechanics, mechanics are funded through an internal service fund in which all departments contribute to that. The mechanics have a very vital job of keeping our equipment and vehicles going, and so we recommend filling those. The engineers and engineering technicians through the city's cost allocation plan, the engineers work on a variety of capital improvement program projects, and there's a corresponding funding that's transferred into the department to pay for these positions, so they have a very small general fund component. And then there's also a project coordinator position that, again, through, has CDBG funding that funds a portion of the position, and then through the cost allocation plan, additional funding coming in from projects. So there's just a very small component of general fund money going towards these positions. So the recommendation that we're requesting from council tonight is to provide direction related to the vacant position policy. And then we'll be coming back on, I'll be coming back on February 18 with recommendations for some budget reduction items that can be implemented pretty quickly. Also, there were a lot of good ideas that came up related to increasing revenues. We're going to be engaging with the revenue ad hoc to start those discussions, and just to kind of give an idea of some of the options that were discussed. For people that come to the front counter to pay their utility bills or to pay for recreation programs, currently, the city basically covers the cost of the credit card fees, and so that's something that could be transferred to the consumer. For utility customers that currently receive a paper bill, we're looking at, you know, encouraging people to go paperless, and so there might be a cost associated with receiving a paper bill. Development Services previously brought forward the idea of increasing their fees, and so they'll be bringing forward a recommendation to increase fees associated with entitlements and development. And so these are all on the table, and will be vetted with the revenue ad hoc and then brought before council for consideration. So that I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Before we go to questions, Councilmember Pasquale, you were on the ad hoc with Councilmember Kirchner. Do you have anything to add to the process you guys went to about the freezing the positions?
No, we had lengthy discussions, Wade and Diana and myself, and we thought, thought this was the best moving forward of what she's fully, completely hit it nail on the head of what we discussed, so I have nothing further to add to it.
All right. Any comments or questions from the council?
Yes. Through the mayor.
Sir.
First, Ms. Langley, I appreciate you and the staff doing basically a mid-year budget review, okay? This was, you know, normal practice, it has been with the city for a while, where we take a look at, you know, revenues and expenses. When this budget was developed, it was unknown whether or not Measure D would pass. We were obviously considering what those impacts would be, and it did not. And so this is just a normal course of business for the city to do a mid-year budget review and adjust very nimbly and pivot to those things that we can continue. To the, to Councilmember Pasquale and Councilmember Kirchner, I'm sure this, and Ms. Langley, I'm sure this was not an easy decision. I've sat in these types of meetings before, but I applaud you for taking the time, the energy, and I know the due diligence to go about this in a manner that I fully support. And I know that there may be more of this as we move on down the road, but I do believe, and again, I just want to voice my support as we move forward for the way you have proposed.
All right. Any other comments or questions from the council? None?
I will just echo, thanks for all the hard work and being nimble and quick at this. Mike and then Diana, it was, we had the meeting on Wednesday, and came out of there and says, we're going to bring this Tuesday, so can you guys meet? So thank you for being nimble and addressing this. To the vice mayor's analysis, I mean, this is what we do every year. This is what people that run companies do every day of their lives. And, you know, I've seen the, the, I don't know if you want to call it, anyway, the social media posts and things out there with, grabbing the very first slide you put up there with the $5 million, yeah, the $5 million deficit. That is $5 million if we stay on the course that we stay on. So what we're talking about doing is a mid-year adjustment and adjusting the course so that we stay within our means. And there's a lot more to come. This is going to be a road that we're going to be on for the next several months to get the budget together for next year. But we're up to the task. I think what you guys have brought forward as far as your recommendation is, is good. Because with that, most, I think most all the, well, yeah, duh, these positions are vacant, so it's not a, a loss of any of our team members. This is simply do the best job we can with the resources we have. And as we've said multiple times, that has to be the, the mantra of the city going forward. So with that, I, I like what you guys have brought forward. And then on the 18th, that's when we'll get down into a little bit more of the nitty-gritty, am I correct?
Yes. So we will actually have specific recommendations for each department and corresponding service modifications, because as, you know, as we are looking at rightsizing the budget, as we've heard from the public and the voters in terms of living within our means, that's the direction that we're going, but that means that we need to change the services that are provided to the community. And a lot of discussion related to reallocating resources, reducing the, you know, material services and supplies, which then impacts things that we can do within the community, and then also how we provide service. And, you know, with that, there's, there's not the ability to maintain the same service level that we have. And so those are things, there's, there's a variety of items that are on the table. And again, it's the shorter-term things that we can implement that we'll be bringing forward on the 18th. And then there's a long list of other items that are longer to implement that will be recommended through the budget process.
Correct. Thank you. And, you know, looking at the, the bigger picture, because I know during the workshop, right out of the chute, one of the questions that came up was, how did we get here? And I think the best way we can put this is, single-digit increase in revenues and double-digit increase in inflation. So our costs just were right off the charts. So with that, if there's any other comments from the council, yes.
A quick one. You know, I know that Sutter Animal Services Authority is not necessarily under our purveyance, however, we have representatives on there. I, for one, would like to hear from them, you know, have them go through, you know, a scenario that the same thing that our department heads, maybe they have already, I just haven't seen it if they are. So I know we have representatives on the board.
I'm on that.
And it just seems like it's fair.
Right.
At this point.
Yeah, we can request to place that on the board agenda. As we were specifically discussing SASSA, when you look at the specific positions, so animal services officer, currently, we have a vacant position. So there's two animal services officers that are serving the entire Sutter County community, and they are on call. And so it's, it's a very difficult to provide the services and not wear these people, the two individuals, out. On kennel attendant, kennel attendant is a position that's constantly vacant. Even when we fill it, we then have vacancies. And so, and then the registered veterinarian technician, it's just extremely hard to find registered vet tech. So if anybody's looking for a career field, that's it, because it's extremely difficult to find vet techs. And so even though we're saying, fill these positions, there's a very good possibility that they will, the kennel attendant and the vet tech will stay vacant. With the animal services officer, we actually have a, a current employee that would be promoting into this position upon approval of the policy. And so, again, we're promoting somebody, so that's going to create a vacancy within
Definitely appreciate the explanation, and I definitely appreciate, having previously served on SASSA, that, you know, there are some challenges there. But again, everybody's having to take a look, and I don't know that we have tasked them to do the same thing that we've done with our department heads. It, it just seems fair to me. There may be nothing, but...
Right.
Through the mayor. Yes, sir.
Is the ad hoc going to continue? Or my services done? Is that, I don't even know.
At this point, I believe it would be done, because you've taken a look at that. If we, I'll ask you this, if the need arises through the budgetary process, would you be willing to step back up if we reform?
Absolutely.
Then you're, you're stood down then.
Okay.
So, all right. How about any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, I will bring it back to council, because we need to provide direction with what's been brought forward. So is the council in approval? Do we need a formal motion, Mr. Attorney, since there, or we just need direction?
You just need direction. So if there's at least three of you that can give direction, for example, to...
Then is the council on board with the ad hoc's recommendation as far as which positions to freeze at this point?
Yes.
You've got four yeses up here.
Thank you. One thing that I do want to note is, when we freeze positions, we will reach out to the bargaining units, because that does impact the, the work. And so with this policy recommendation, you know, we will fill the positions that have been noted and reach out to the bargaining units to address the positions that are recommended to be frozen. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving along to Agenda Item 13, future agenda items. This is the opportunity to discuss with the council and city mayor, or city manager, any items that came up in the meeting that you would like to have brought back to the council at a later date.
I would like to see SASSA in our next meeting have a presentation.
Presentation from SASSA? Anything else from the council? Ms. Langley, is there anything you would like specifically brought back? Okay. So if we could have a presentation from SASSA, maybe considering the budget reduction, that would be great. Let's move on to reports and communications. We'll start off with the city manager's report.
I do not have anything to report this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to council reports. Councilmember Cole.
Councilmember Cole.
Okay, so upon commission assignments, I got to attend the first SASSA meeting, which was last Monday, and Michael graciously accepted chair of that. So, first official meeting for a committee, and then second, was able to go to a meeting, or I guess an unofficial meeting with John Corliss and Mark and Carm Baines to learn a little bit more about SECOG. And then in addition to that, just something I'd like to give some gratitude to, I don't know if Jesse's still on the liner, can hear me, but I really applaud all that you're doing with fire. I got to do a ride-along with Fire Station Three, and these guys are just top-notch and very, very grateful for Eric and the work that they're doing with just so much character and integrity, just good, good guys over there all around, so grateful.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Pasquale.
Thank you, mayor. No, I have nothing to add other than what was brought up with my attendance in SASSA and such. So, with that, I'll conclude my report.
All right, thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As mentioned previously, we had the goal set, the goal session, and I just want to, again, all those that were in the room, I think it was a good, good meeting, good sharing of information that needed to get out so that people heard the real story, and, you know, sets the stage for how we are doing our mid-year budget reviews. As Councilmember Cole mentioned, she and I, Carm Baines, met with SECOG's executive director. His ask of us at the time was priorities, and I worked with Diana and Ben Moody in regards to historically what are some of the things that the city has been working with, the Sacramento area council of government, which is SECOG. One is the continuation of the bike lane through Sutter County. Another that I raised, and I know that we've chatted about it here, was a traffic signal, signalize intersection at El Margarita and Highway 20 by the high school. We also raised the concern of a signal at, enhanced signal at Bog and Highway 99, especially with the Bog Stewart master plan underway, or soon to be underway. We talked about traffic calming throughout several areas that were in the city. I am going to hand-carry a map of our Terre Boina area, which is in District Two, of course. We had a Terre Boina ad hoc committee. I unfortunately was not able to attend that by my own mistake. However, I'm going to seek the, some expertise on our behalf as a council, in my position as Rep. on SECOG, with those folks down there. I don't expect that they're going to do any work, but they could point us in the direction of some help. And also, again, push forward on SECOG mini-grants. The funding, the funding process for the state funds is coming forward. Mini-grants are a lower amount of grants that are pretty nimble and things that, that the city can do relatively inexpensively, not that anything with traffic or streets anymore is inexpensive, but I'll be, I've asked the executive director to point me more in the direction. I know her peers over in Marysville have recently been awarded one of those. So, things like pedestrian safety, crosswalks and such. That concludes my report. Oh, I do have one thing. Today, I got the grand joy of driving to the Bay Area and back. I would just say, and I'm not defending the city of Yuba City, our roads, in some circumstances, are far better than those in communities like Daly City, Redwood City, et cetera, and the highways. So, everybody, everybody seems to be in that position of trying to figure out, you know, how to fund roads. The state's gas tax just does not do it.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, and I would absolutely concur how bad they are down there. I'm going to summarize real quick, because we still have closed session. Been a busy, busy couple of weeks. We had a planning session with the, with GSEC, Greater Sacramento Economic Council, Mike Pasquale and myself did, and out of that, looking potentially going forward with some type of long-term economic strategic plan that they would be helping with. Attended the city selection committee, and always rotates around, so Live Oak is actually the alternate from the city selection this time on Lavco. Terre Boina ad hoc, we did bring all that, bring all that forward. We basically had a thought process to where we really took, as a group, a look at the whole Terre Boina area and the possibilities. And we've asked our ad hoc committee to, to go back, and we're going to get together in about another three to four weeks. And we told them, just take Google, Google Earth, Google Maps, start looking at it, start coming back with ideas, because the answers may be in the proposals it's been, but it may not even be on a proposal yet. So, so that's the approach we're taking right now, and it encompasses not just what was around Hooper and the Frontage Road and El Margarita, but looking at Terre Boina School, Royal Ranchero, Butte House, the whole, the whole area there. Council workshop, we just talked about that. I just want to say for the council workshop, you know, to our E-Team, thank you for bringing forward what was asked. I know it wasn't easy, and you guys put a hell of a lot of work into it. I think we all hurt each other's hearts that day, that's what we're trying to do, and we will work together and come out even better on the backside of this. So, to the E-Team, thank you. To the labor groups, I have spent a lot of time the last few weeks, weeks, meeting with everybody in, in getting ready for that meeting, and I just want to say I appreciate your candidness and your openness to work together, again, because it's going to take us all to get the solutions. Let's see, where are we at? Yeah, did interviews with KOVR and KFBK on Pioneer, and they seemed to grab some pretty good traction. And then the last is, I think we kind of had an impromptu outreach ad hoc, didn't we, Mike? Meeting? We just got on the phone and said, hey, what do you think about this? We're going to start rolling out different things, so you'll start hearing from various ones of us on the council and the city, getting the right information out. We've got a lot of good ideas that we found out there that hopefully we'll bring forward. The funniest one that I really like it, I'm just going to throw it out there, found on another city's webpage, goes back to our council workshop, rumor has it. You know, that seems to be our Achilles' heel, rumor has it. And it's very simple, you point them there, and it's like, hey, Mark, rumor has it, you own the cost, are you on the Kmart building, is that right? You know, you just address it in a couple of sentences. No, you don't, you know? But things like that are continually done, and so, we're going to be working to try to get some of that stuff up there, because I tell you, we run into that all the time. So, with that, we've got a busy few weeks ahead of us here, and we need to go into closed session. So, Mr. Chaffin, can you update us on what we're going into closed session about?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are two items in closed session this evening. First one is item A, public employee appointment employment pursuant to government code section 54957, the title is city manager. Item B is threats to public services or facilities pursuant to government code section 54957A, consultation with city manager and city attorney. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any comments from the public on the agenda items for closed session? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, we will move into closed session.
Yubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumislakeselfstorage.com.
In Marysville, where roots run deep, McNally Appliances promises to keep. The best brands with a smile on its face. We serve as what we sell, it's a warm embrace. Competitive pricing, you can't ignore. With every purchase, you'd love it more. From fridges to washers, all in a line, we install with care to make it shine. Major brands, trusted and true, McNally Appliances is here for you. Oh, McNally McNally, we're your first choice. In Marysville, we help you rejoice. We serve as what we sell, no need to stress. At McNally Appliances, we're simply the best. Our promise stands, we'll always be here. McNally Appliances, bring in your cheer.
You've seen signs marking some of the gems in Marysville. They're produced by Sapphire Sign Company, providing something small, large, and mobile. With decades of experience, Sapphire Signs has pioneered local production of a variety of signs, like temporary campaign-style signs, welcomes for unique events, building signage, event promotion, and vehicle customization. Need a sign? Make it a gem from Sapphire Sign Company, on the web at sapphiremarkinggroup.net. Sapphire.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders, or even yourself, has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties.
In Yuba County, there's a legendary diner.
Delicious. Oh, my gosh, thank you so much.
Where the parking lot tells a story. A story as simple as biscuits and gravy.
The food is good, the prices are wonderful. My dad has so many friends here that come here, and it's, my dad and mom have known Mary Jane and her dad before Duke.
Duke's Diner on Seventh Avenue, home of legendary chili, holiday pies, and generations of local residents preparing tasty, hearty food for generations of local people. Join Mary Jane and her genial associates as they serve meals you'll come back for. Duke's Diner on Seventh Avenue, Olivehurst.